Here on Northbound 680, I'm sort of hoping the day will come. So anyway, welcome to Innovate 680 Committee Meeting for Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. And so we are now going to call the meeting to order. And please give your attention to a short video now that we have all been beautifully illuminated. So you can see us with our glow. So. This meeting will be conducted as a Zoom webinar to allow for public participation and comments. The Contra Costa Transportation Authority does not condone hate speech in any form. We continually strive to make life better for all members of our community and create an atmosphere where everyone feels a sense of safety and belonging. We ask that anyone who wishes to speak does so with civility, respect, and kindness for others. Public speakers will have up to three minutes to speak. The Chair will call upon public speakers at the appropriate time. Each public speaker is requested to state their name and organization, but providing such information is voluntary. Public speakers who wish to speak in person should submit a public speaker card to the clerk. Public speakers participating by Zoom who are wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial star nine if participating via phone. Written public comments received in accordance with the teleconferencing special notice on the meeting agenda will be provided to the members. If authors of any written correspondence would like to speak during the meeting, they should raise their hand or submit a public speaker card. Thank you for participating in a meeting of the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. Thank you. Erica, would you please call the roll?
Member Armstrong. Member Carlson. Member Josie. Member McKillop. Member Obringer.
Here.
Member Ren.
Here.
Member Stepper. Member Stor. Member Will. Vice Chair Noack.
Here.
And Chair Anderson.
I am here. Okay, so now we are going to go to public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on any item not on this evening's agenda, but under the purview of this committee, this is your opportunity. I'm not seeing anyone jumping up from our audience. Did we receive any speaker cards?
I do not have any speaker cards. We did have one written public comment that was emailed to the committee.
Okay, thank you for that. And do we have anyone remote?
I do not have anybody remote.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. We do have a consent calendar. It's approval of our minutes from April 30th, 2025, a little while back. Are there any comments from anyone about the minutes on our committee?
I would move approval.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Going to confirm that no one sitting out there wants to talk about the minutes. And we don't have any written comment or anyone calling in on Zoom. Okay.
There are no public comments.
Okay, and do you want to do a roll call even though we?
Yeah, I'll do a roll call.
Some committees want to just to verify who says what. Okay, go ahead, please.
Member Carlson.
Aye.
Member Josie.
Aye.
Member Mc... Member Obringer.
Yes.
Member Ren.
Aye.
Member Stepper.
Aye.
Member Stor. Member Vice Chair Noack.
Yes.
And Chair Anderson.
Yes, also, okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you so much. We're going to go into our regular agenda items, starting with item four. This is an item for discussion, but it is informational and it's going to be presented by Stephanie Hu to provide an update on 680 program and project. So please go ahead, Stephanie.
Good evening, committee members. Yes, this item is for me to provide an update on the program and its projects. We didn't meet at our last meeting, so there's a few updates that we would like to cover. I think I'll skip the slides of projects that we've been talking about for a while now. So just maybe get to the updates. So for express lanes, we are nearing the end of the project approval environmental clearance, or we call P A D phase. We actually had our final environmental document signed off at end of October. And the last piece that we're working towards completing is the engineering side, which will allow us to achieve project approval. And with that, the P A D will be complete. That is scheduled to be early December. Concurrently, we have started 30% design. You guys know that we have been awarded mega funding for construction of a Phase One. So starting 30% design concurrent with this end part of P A D really enables us to be more informed as we go after a alternative delivery method of progressive design build. So that's what we've been working on for the last couple of months. The mega agreement is in the hands of the feds at the headquarters level. It went through California's review and it's now in the feds' hands to review and continue on its process. But with the shutdown, we haven't really heard much. But we're hopeful that it will get resolved hopefully very soon. For part-time transit lane, this item is actually in part of our meeting agenda later on. So I will maybe save that. Andy Delard, who's been managing the testing and training at Gomontem Station, will provide you an update on how that's going. Share mobility hubs, we have prioritized the three hubs, as you know, at the Martinez Amtrak, Warner Creek Bart Station, and the Bishop Ranch area. So all three have actually started environmental design clearance, preliminary design to get NEPA clearance. Supporting that effort is the Regional Measure Three Funds, which we have received allocation to do this initial work. And so they're involved with the environmental clearance is also a bunch of outreach efforts that we have already started. For ADS, or the Automated Driving System, the shuttle operations at Rossmore ended in August, which completed the demonstration period for that. We also did a... are doing a shuttle at the County Hospital in Martinez, and that's winding down as well, scheduled to be complete in December. And then the personal mobility project on 680, which we talked about last time, that has been complete and the group, the team is working on sort of final reporting to the feds. Moss, we... that includes actually the shuttle at Bishop Ranch that has also concluded in August. But the other piece is the app, of course, and that's been still on soft pause while we work on some issues with BART. However, the car share piece, we have already obtained the cars and the telematics had been installed in the vehicles. And so that's work is ongoing and the beta testing is scheduled to be later this year. Advanced Technology, as you know, includes the coordinate adaptive ramp metering and also the coordinate adaptive traffic signal. So that's CARM and CATS. CARM continues to be on the agenda. So we are... have actually achieved 65% design and the design set is being reviewed by Caltrans. For CATS, we have actually been awarded an ideogram from MTC that helps to achieve system engineering of a demonstration corridor for CATS. And that's at the San Ramon, heart San Ramon Valley Boulevard corridor. And work has already begun. We've been meeting with stakeholders to understand the users' needs and all that. That's been ongoing. Actually, we're meeting with a couple of groups this week and next week. And that's the last slide for the update. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Looks like you have a question.
Well, just is that car share vendor, the one that... Not that one? Okay.
Yeah, it's not Q Bus, the remote drive vendor that we saw at Gomontem Station. So it's with Excelsior, which is they... they're basically folks that were from AAA Gig. And then they kind of created their own like startup called Excelsior. And so they were the ones working on the project when AAA was involved. And then when AAA exited, we just kind of continued that kind of natural progression for the car share.
Okay, thanks. Other comments from anyone? A lot of this is a little bit of a refresher, stuff we've been working on for many years now. Okay, anyone from the audience who is sitting here, anyone online, anyone else who wishes to speak to this item?
We do not have any written in-person or remote public comments.
Okay, well, terrific. Thank you. Then we are going to move on to our next.
I apologize, Chair. I do have one quick question, please.
Okay, go ahead, Carolyn.
So under advanced technology, so I do recall hearing that CCTA received the mega award. And so for construction. And so I'm just wondering, when does that actually... when does construction actually begin? Because I know getting the award is one thing, but actually, you know, starting to move dirt is another.
Yeah, so we are in 60% design for the coordinate adaptive ramp metering. We did have to do additional work to add the mega funded piece because we now are now going to... we added a segment north of 24 to about Willow Pass. Construction is going to be around late 2027. That's the earliest. And the hope is that we can deploy at least a segment of the COCARM piece early 2028 to demonstrate its effectiveness and benefits to the community here along 680. So that's the goal.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Let's move on then to Agenda Item 4B. And this is also informational. And I think Stephanie, you are also walking us through this one. And we're going to be talking about our O and M, our operations and maintenance agreements for Innovate 680.
Sure, thanks. Chair Anderson, so this item is related to future O and M needs and agreements, in form of agreements for our 680 projects. We just went over all the project updates and a lot of them will require or will have O and M activities post-construction or implementation. So as you know, the projects and programs are working together in a holistic manner for the operation of 680 in a more efficient manner. And requires coordination and for each of the entities to... in order to have a successful O and M experience. I think once we construct, then what? So I think going through the O and M agreement process will help us determine what are those sticky points, what are the concerns of our local partners. And the successful O and M partnership will require commitment from each of our entities and our partners for our stakeholders and CCTA to have common understanding of O and M responsibilities. And then also support from the leadership at each of the agencies to allow or ensure sufficient resources, whether it is staff or financial contribution, if it exists, are dedicated to the success of O and M of this, of our completed projects. So we put together a matrix to really understand what kind of agreements will be in place for each of our projects. Here, we will go over what type of agreements will be needed, which... and then which project needs what? And also who will be signatories and partners on these agreements? And then when? So this first one shows at the far left corner or column, different agreements. So they can range from operations or ownership maintenance agreements, memorandum of understanding, co-op agreements that can maybe cover data sharing, public-private partnership, standard operating procedure SOP. And then the bottom line, which I'll go over later, is items that are non-CTA-related. On the top line is all of our project under Innovate. So for Northbound Express Lanes, for example, since we do not operate or maintain the express lane system, we won't mainly have any participation. CCTA won't in any of these agreements except maybe a co-op with MTC to gather data from their express lane system, whether it's performance data to really inform our future TMC or our decision support system. So that's a checkmark noting that we would have some... CCTA will have some form of involvement or be a signatory to. The second box that I'm showing here is that while express lanes won't have O and M agreements that CCTA is part of, it will likely be a part of an O and M agreement for the other projects to really denote roles and responsibilities of the O and M, cost sharing, and just what CCTV... what CCTV roles will look like and as well as other partners. For CATS and CARM, we have embarked on memorandum of understanding as a need or identified as a need. While MOUs are not really legally binding, but going through the experience or going through the process of development in MOU, like we are doing for CARM, really helps us to identify any sticky issues, any things that we need further collaboration or just being able to kind of tease those out before we actually embark on an O and M agreement has been very helpful. So that's why those, the CARM and CATS, we anticipate to have a MOU. Some of the projects will have data sharing by itself. The data sharing, we anticipate being in the co-op for CARM and CATS. But we think that having a co-op in terms of four things like data sharing will maybe need it for express lane, part-time transit lane, mobility hubs. And we did have one for the ADS demonstration projects and also MOD Moss. Public-private partnership with P3 is a potential for share mobility hubs. So we are here, have a checkmark here, just something that we anticipate having for share mobility hubs. And then for standard operating procedures or SOP, that will definitely be needed across all projects. But we didn't check, make a checkmark on express lane because we don't operate. So we don't have in-depth sort of activities with that project. And the last line again is, was to denote what other agreements are out there while we're not signatories perhaps, that we may be needing to be aware of and to be tracking there involve other agencies. So the second slide is the same table, but now showing partners that will be involved in each of these O and M agreements. For first... and I will... I won't highlight all of them, but just to denote the colors. I know it's hard to see now on the screen. So orange is the transit operators, yellow is Caltrans, the white text is local jurisdictions. And then the text in black are like other partners, like vendors or property owners. And then MTC, CHP are in like red and purple. So I'll just highlight maybe for today's conversation, those are involving local jurisdictions. That may be what you guys would be most interested in. So for share mobility hubs, we anticipate local jurisdiction to be... definitely be party to an O and M agreement, especially if the site is in a city's jurisdiction or there's deep involvement with O and M. Like, for example, the Amtrak station in Martinez or the Bishop Ranch location that's in city of San Ramon. We anticipate the city will have a seat at, you know, as a signatory to that agreement. Also, co-ops for data sharing regarding share mobility hubs usage and parking and whatnot. And then SOP, standard operating procedures on the day-to-day operations of these share mobility hubs would definitely have a local participation. The ADS project, what we're showing here is what we actually had for our demonstration phase. So the site owner, definitely if it's a city, at Bishop Ranch, for example, there was an O and M or operational ownership agreements there. And then data sharing agreements with the cities. And then SOP was definitely involving local jurisdictions and ourselves at CCTA. For share mobility... sorry, for mobility as a service of the MOD Moss project. Again, there would be O and M agreements with the city, especially with rooftoping car share. If there's a need to park these cars in a city jurisdiction, for example, we would need to be memorializing that into an agreement of some sort, as well as a standard operating procedures and also data sharing that could take in the form of a co-op. For CATS, again, definitely need to have O and M agreements with local jurisdiction as it pertains to coordination of adaptive signals with along the arterials in the local jurisdictions. Memorandum of Understanding, we think we will need as we learn from our experience from CARM so far, that has been really helpful for us to, again, understanding the concerns of the locals and having the process to tease out any of... or identification, identifying what is important or a worry perhaps for a local jurisdiction. So that process has been helpful for us to tease out those items. And then SOP, truly understanding how it affects the local jurisdiction's daily operations of their traffic signals, involving not only traffic engineers, for example, but also emergency responders, police, public work, other parts of public works. And then CARM, which we actually have... are further along in this whole process because we have developed a couple of drafts of the SO... MOU that's been reviewed by local jurisdictions. So while the O and M agreements may only be between CCTA and Caltrans, definitely the local jurisdiction will be able to voice their needs and their asks through a form of a MOU. But also very, more importantly, the SOP, the daily operations, being able to shape what that looks like in the day-to-day operations of the arterials that we'll be facing or interfacing with CARM. So that's on the far right. And then lastly, the bottom row, as I said, was basically other agreements that we anticipate that's already existing, actually, is on that bottom row there. Like Northbound Express Lane, like I said, there's definitely an agreement between Caltrans, CHP, and MTC, BEFA. Part-time transit lane, we have that in the future as up and running. It would be CHP, the transit operators, and Caltrans. And then the mobility hubs, we noted here, actually, as noted in white for local jurisdiction, is that because there are sites that are actually in the city right-of-way, that we... they may need to enter into agreements with whether there is transit operators or property owners where the site is at.
Robert, I think Robert has a quick question before you go on.
Yeah, sure.
High-level question. You know, I believe that the CHP, Caltrans, and MTC certainly understand their role here. How have you... how have we communicated this to the transit agencies? And do you think they understand their role clearly?
Yeah, so for each of our projects, well, first of all, we have a tech, a technical advisory committee that we convene and have been convening since the beginning of the program. So they've been following us along on the progress of the project, the expectations and the goals of each of the projects. And as we embark on each one, we have meetings or we have project development team-type meetings that discuss these needs. So for example, for CATS, actually, we are embarking on doing the coordinate adaptive traffic signals in the San Ramon Valley corridor. And transit operators, like the county connection folks, are at the table to discuss the user needs, what are the roles and responsibilities, what are the concerns of each of the parties, whether it's transit operators, the city staff, MTC, or Caltrans. So it's through those conversations that we gain consensus and a common understanding about what the roles are and what are the expectations of each of the parties and be able to flesh those out as we discuss moving projects from design to construction to implementation.
Do you think it's a clear understanding of what their role is?
Right, and I think through documents like MOUs, that's really where things get voiced because then it's becoming real. I think during design, it's very much like engineering, construction. But once we get through that and understanding, okay, now it's in place. Now what? Who is doing what? The development of these agreements enable us to have those conversations and identifying what is those sticky issues. Like, I don't want to do that, or I want CTA to do that. I think that's when, to your question, when those things will get identified and flushed out and for a common understanding to be gained.
I assume you have a little more in your presentation, unless anyone has a mid-presentation question?
Oh, Karen, I'm sorry. Are you?
No, I just have one more slide, actually.
Okay, well, go ahead. Finish your slide and then we'll see if there are more questions.
Yeah, so the next slide was actually on timing. So not all of these things will happen at once. So the last slide was really to show what projects we anticipate to embark on the O and M agreement conversation and development. For sure, share mobility hubs, we have already started preliminary design. And so there... we're starting to come up with term sheets or items that will definitely have O and M components and we need to be discussing with our stakeholders and partners. And on the far right, the MOD Moss app, my understanding that's to be up and running next year. So for sure, that's also in our short-term kind of timeframe. CATS and CARM, as I said, CARM is already on its way. We have MOUs developed. Our next step is to work on an O and M agreement. And then CATS is going to follow shortly after that, anticipating sort of following that same pattern with developing an MOU and then an O and M agreement. And then an SOP as sort of a day-to-day operating procedures for our partners to understand what happens in a day... on a daily basis, who takes control, who makes decisions, and what our roles are. I think that was my last slide. So I'm happy to take any more questions you guys may have.
Any questions for committee members on this? Okay, any comments from anyone in the audience, online, written comments?
We do not have any written in-person or remote public comments.
Okay, then we are going to move on to Agenda Item Number, or Letter C. And this is also informational, to be presented by Darren Henderson, Frances Lo, Ong Mong, to provide an update of the Innovate 680 ramp metering strategy coordination efforts. Whoever wants to come up. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jordan Seer. I'm here for Ong Mong. He's on an assignment with headquarters. Caltrans portion, the ramp metering project on 680. The update is that it's going to be in construction in a week or so, right? That's what it is. And I think the slides are too after they give the timeline of what we did and how we got here. But just to go to the background of the project itself. Thank you so much. This one, this was originally programmed in 2020 under Caltrans Sharp TMS program. And the limits were from Alameda County all the way to Solano County. The scope included over 36 miles of fiber optic line, 51 ramp meters, 25 in northbound direction, and 26 in southbound direction. Nine CCTV cameras, two changeable message signs, and 58 vehicle detection stations. Estimated cost that time was $100 million. Later in 2023, the project was split in coordination with CCTA into two phases. And we can go to the next slide, please, to integrate better with CARM. The Phase One includes 45 ramp meters, 19 the northbound, 26 in the southbound direction, the CCTVs, changeable message signs, and the fiber optic line. And the timeline for the... for Phase One, we'll go through it. The ready-to-list was achieved on January 15th of January 2025. Construction allocation by CDC was 21st of March 2025. The contract was awarded on 25th of September. And the construction is going to begin on 18th of November. The construction contract acceptance is tentatively in summer of 2028 with the estimated construction cost of $107 million. The Phase Two, which integrates with the CARM project, that is particularly for the geometric modifications and ramp meters for the northbound on-ramps at the locations, Bollinger Canyon Road eastbound and westbound, Cro Canyon Road eastbound and westbound, Sycamore Valley Road westbound, Olympic Boulevard westbound, and Willow Pass Road westbound. So the implementation plan for the corridor itself is deliver the Sharp Phase One project by summer of 2028. We are going to activate the ramp meters, but they will rest in green and they will not cycle until CARM is ready. The Phase Two, which integrates with CCTA Segment One, CARM Segment One 3A, for delivery in late 2028, 2029. We have the CCTA and the consultant to operate and maintain the CARM at the northbound on-ramps under three-year pilot and then transfer the CARM over to Caltrans afterwards with an O and M agreement. with an O&M agreement and the licensing responsibility pending, funding availability and the agreements. So this is the one that we just saw in the previous slides regarding the O&M agreement details that you saw. The scope of the CARM pilot deployment expanded with the Mega Grant. And the Caltrans ramp metering operation, which will be under a FuzzyLogic Adaptive Ramp Meter, will be outside the limit, the CARM limits, for Segment 1 and 3A, which are going to be operating under the Streams algorithm that Darren is probably going to go into the detail. And will continue evaluating the ramp metering strategies, including CARM, with the goal of optimizing the freeway mainline and the ramp meter operation.
Okay, any questions before he leaves? Okay, next. Oh, Karen does have a question.
We won't let him leave.
Okay, I don't mean leave before he left, sitting there. I'm ready to.
Is he going out the door or is he answering?
No, I mean, we can bring him back if you'd prefer to wait till questions.
He's running quick, grab him.
Well, Karen, go ahead and ask the question.
So I will take over. I'm Darren Henderson with GHD.
Wait, before you go, Darren, Karen had one question, and maybe you'll be able to answer it as part of your presentation.
This is a test. Now, when you're going through all these different steps and the different parts, are we evaluating as we go and the effect on the people? Or are we waiting till we're done?
Once the projects get deployed.
Yeah, once we start.
Yes, they'll be evaluated at regular intervals through the deployment of the projects, so that that way we can make changes if we need to do further refinements, all that sort of stuff.
Like every month, or?
I believe that the plan is for the CARM deployment after the first three months, because we want to make sure that there's some level of stability before we, I mean, we'll obviously be tracking the project immediately and making sure that there's no major impacts or any sort of unforeseen circumstances. But in terms of formal evaluations, the plan would be after three months, we'll do an initial evaluation to see what the results of the project are telling us. And then we will do a six-month evaluation and then an annual evaluation. And then they'll continue on an annual basis for the life of the performance, of the demonstration project. And then at the end of the three years, we would consolidate all of that information together into a robust report that basically presents the results of the pilot.
So if there were effects on neighbors or anything or on the other side of the freeway, those kind of things should take up as they happen?
Yes.
Then this is the evaluation.
Oh, certainly, yes.
Thank you.
So the project will be actively managed, the CARM project will be actively managed. So there will be an operations contractor or staff person that will be monitoring the project on a daily basis. And so if there are impacts that are being observed by the local communities, they will be able to contact CCTA and then get attention to it immediately.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Maybe I should know this, my apologies. FuzzyLogic-based adaptive ramp. Just help me out with that one. Does everybody else know this?
So if the Caltrans guys will allow me, there are a number of different algorithms that are used to operate ramp metering systems. And so the one that Caltrans is now using primarily on their newer systems is called FuzzyLogic. It's a, it was an algorithm that was developed by the Washington State Department of Transportation. And basically, it uses data from the ramps as well as the mainline adjacent to the ramps to estimate what capacity is available downstream. And then it calculates what the ramp metering rate should be in order to provide an adequate flow. The arm part of it is that it adapts regularly so that that way the metering rates will change according to changes in traffic conditions. So it's just the particular approach that Caltrans uses for its ramp metering in corridors where they've done more recent deployments of ramp metering.
That doesn't sound fuzzy to me, but thank you.
The FuzzyLogic part is in, if there's an absence of data, it uses FuzzyLogic to estimate what that data should imply and then complete the calculation. So that's where the naming protocol came from.
Thank you.
And we thank you for asking the question, Robert.
And if you really want to get into the weeds on it, I can hook you up with one of my former colleagues, Les Jacobson, who is largely responsible for it. And you can blame him for it as much as you want.
Sounds like a good idea.
I just wanted to chime in on Karen's question really quick, because I think it's an important one, not to discount your FuzzyLogic question there. But I think the, I think the important thing about the coordinated adaptive ramp metering project is to understand how it's going to benefit the local jurisdictions, right? So like, and we've been talking a lot about this internally because we're doing the Smart Signal program. And the Smart Signal program will have the ability to gather data at these intersections, you know, on the local roads in all these local jurisdictions along the 680 corridor. And so really, the idea is that when you start combining the Smart Signal program with the CARM project, what happens is, you know, we can start showing how we're getting more productivity in the freeway corridor. And by getting more productivity in the freeway corridor, we can see the benefits, what's happening on the local side. You know, so, for example, if we're getting more productivity in the freeway corridor, then maybe we're getting less cut-through traffic through local jurisdictions, right? Because the freeway is being more productive, right? So that's one, for example. And then if the freeway is actually being more productive, then the local roads are potentially being also more productive as well, you know, in terms of throughput on the local jurisdiction corridors. So we're basically looking and gathering data from both the local jurisdiction side but also on the highway side through CARM, and we're going to be evaluating those benefits on both sides. You know, so that's really key to this whole thing is really understanding not just the benefits to the freeway system, but the benefits to the local system as well.
Well, and that was, that was one of the concerns originally when we were talking about this was that in order to make the highway move faster, it would back it up on the local roads. So we're hoping the reverse is true. But that was quite a discussion when we first started talking about this. I don't know how many years ago that was now, but.
Please continue, unless anyone has any other. Oh, Matt, you, you, go ahead.
No, I did not. I was just participating, saying, good job.
Oh, okay, okay. We've got the cheerleader amongst us. Thank you, Matt. Well, we're so glad you're here, okay.
Watch out, he's excited to be here.
Carry on, please.
Okay, we're doing great.
So for those that don't remember, I'm Darren Henderson. I'm with a company called GHD. And we are the, I'm the Innovate 680 Corridor Manager. I'm also the subject matter expert on the CARM program. So again, thank you for having us here tonight. So our update, as you may recall, the CARM program is a multi-phase project that will implement this particular approach to ramp metering. So like FuzzyLogic is an approach, CARM is another approach. It just happens to be a more advanced approach to ramp metering and sort of fundamental piece of what they call managed motorways in Australia. So it's the part that really drives getting productivity on the freeways under those programs. We do have a long-term vision for implementing CARM along the entire length of the 680 corridor. So as Armjad indicated, the Caltrans project will install ramp meters and will operate them using the Caltrans system. As CCTA finds additional funding, ideally through things like the measure and other grant programs, we will continue to expand CARM, assuming it's successful in the first deployments, so that ultimately it will cover the full length of the 680 corridor and ideally will extend to other freeways in Contra Costa County as well. But in order to get us to a project that's manageable, we're focused on an initial project segment. Segment 1 was from Alcosta Boulevard on the southern end of the corridor at the Alameda County Line to Olympic Boulevard in the north. So it's that section that's highlighted in blue on the map in front of you. And then when, with the receipt of the Mega Grant, we were able to extend the limits of the project further to the north. It coincides with the limits of the express lanes completion project. And so ultimately, once that corridor is complete, we will be extending the coordinated adaptive ramp metering through Lawrence Way up to Willow Pass Road, which will get us almost three-quarters of the way up the northbound side of the corridor encompassing 19 ramps. And again, as Armjad mentioned, the Caltrans Shop project will install the ramp meters at the remaining ramps in the corridor. So all of those highlighted in green will initially have a Caltrans ramp metering system operational. And again, with the goal of ultimately implementing CARM at some point in the future. So as you can imagine, and as we've talked about before, there's a lot of overlapping pieces here. So the project schedules have this sort of braided effect going on. Armjad alluded to it a little bit in his discussion on the Phase 1 and Phase 2 projects with Caltrans. So to complicate matters, we have our own phases of work as well. So for CARM Segment 3A, the more recently added piece that extends the limits to the north, we do need to do a revalidation of the environmental document. There was an environmental document that covered those sections that was produced by Caltrans, because originally they were going to be delivered as part of the Shop project. So now we're doing a revalidation of that document to demonstrate that there aren't any more significant environmental impacts that are associated with expanding the scope of the CARM project and taking it to the north. And then we're also in the process of developing a supplemental project report. So again, we're changing the scope of the project to incorporate some additional elements for CARM. So we need to update the project report to incorporate those additional provisions. And so that draft project report's been completed and has been submitted to Caltrans and is currently being reviewed. The projects will then get, or the intent was that the projects would then get consolidated into a final design package. That is actually underway. As Stephanie mentioned earlier in her presentation, we've reached the 65% milestone for the design of both of those segments. So we were proceeding with 3A somewhat at risk because we don't have our project to report yet. But we felt that in order to expedite the delivery of the project, we wanted to move forward with the design of that in conjunction with the work that was already underway. So that 65% milestone was accomplished back in, a couple of weeks ago, late October. And those plans, as Stephanie mentioned, are currently with the department and are being reviewed. And we're hopeful that we won't get too many significant changes and we'll be able to move it forward into final design. Ultimately, with the funding that's been received through the various grant programs, and specifically Mega, it will allow us to then operate the corridor for three years as a pilot project once we get through the construction phase. So the goal is to consolidate all of those design packages into a single bid package and then basically have a single construction package for CARM, the delivery of the CARM project, or the first phase of the CARM project. We mentioned at previous meetings that we are using a PLA. So that's been negotiated by CCTA in order to ensure that there are appropriate provisions for prevailing labor. I just mentioned the project construction and coordination, basically consolidating those together into a single package. There are some conflicts with the Caltrans Middle Mile Broadband Project that those have been identified, and we'll be working to avoid those. And then basically, once we get our Mega Grant approved, it will complement the work that's already been done with STIP and with Shop and getting those transfers, the buckets of money, moving the peanut shells around to get the money into the right place that we can actually deliver the project. So all of that work's been going on. Stephanie and now Ryan are very much involved in doing that part of it. And so we're in a good position to keep things moving forward as we finalize design. So having said all of that, we've had a little bit of a change in direction or in terms of prioritization at our executive steering committee that took place back in September. One of the actions that came out of that meeting was to accelerate the delivery of an initial CARM segment, and Stephanie alluded to this in her conversations, and to get that operational by the beginning of 2028. And the goal of doing that is to be able to use the findings of that initial performance evaluation that we were asked about a few months ago, take that three-month report, take that six-month report, and be able to report back to the public that this is what these projects can do. You know, look at this investment that we've made in the corridor, look at the benefits that we're able to derive from implementing things like CARM. If you vote on the measure and allow us to do more of these in the future, we can expand those benefits, not only to the freeways, but as Tim said, we can also expand them to the arterial networks and ensure that, you know, the benefits are being realized by all of the residents of Contra Costa County. So there's very much a desire to get that initial segment up and running, to make sure that it's a segment that can deliver solid findings and then ultimately help us to campaign for the reauthorization of your measure in 2028. So my team and CCTA staff have been, have now been tasked and challenged with figuring out how to get us there. Because in case you haven't noticed, it's only about two years away. And so we've got a lot of work to get accomplished between now, at 65% design, and ultimately getting the project up and running. Someone asked Stephanie earlier, when will construction be underway? The goal is that we need to get that first section under construction by, at the latest 2027, the start of 2027. So that would give us basically a year to complete construction, device installation, and get the system up and running. That is a, that is a big ask. And so we will be looking for all the ways that we can to accelerate delivery of the various phases of work, coordinate with Caltrans on the delivery of the pieces that they're doing as part of their project. Fortunately, their project has already been let, and they are now starting construction. So they're getting a jumpstart on us in terms of being able to deliver their portions of the work. But we'll definitely need to be coordinating on that project as well to ensure that we can get all the pieces in place to allow us to be operational by the start of 2028.
Can you tell me what the initial segment is? Or has that been determined yet?
Sort of. So, no, that's all right. It's a fair question. So we've been working on developing a plan for what that portion would be. And in fact, I'll just go back to the map slide. So we're basically focused on the section from Alcosta to Lavorne as that initial deployment section. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One is it avoids the express lanes completion project impacts that will be happening downstream. The initial phase of the express lanes completion project will be between Lawrence Way and Willow Pass. As you may recall, there's braided ramps that are going to be built in that section. There's some realignment of the freeway that will have to happen in order to accommodate the additional express lane. So we anticipate that it would have a pretty significant impact on the ability to operate CARM in that section, especially since some of the ramps will be getting reconstructed as part of the braided ramp initiative. It would also have an impact on our ability to monitor the mainline traffic flows to basically install vehicle detectors and then not have them wiped out by other construction activities. So the plan is to focus on that section south of Lavorne and get that piece operational. The other reason that it's a desirable piece for us is that there is an isolated bottleneck that occurs in that corridor from about, or just south of Stone Valley, in the vicinity of Stone Valley Road. Especially in the morning, there's a bottleneck that forms in that location and causes slowdowns and some congestion. It is independent of anything further to the north, like it's not being caused by a backup from 24. backup from 24. So we feel that that's a really good candidate to demonstrate the effectiveness of a strategy like CARM to manage the traffic flows into a bottleneck like that, using the ramp meters on the ramps that I just described, to demonstrate the benefit. And so, and then it's also going to place us far enough south of the express lanes completion that we'll be able to monitor as far north as we can and hopefully regulate the flow into that construction zone a little bit more effectively. So there's a multitude of reasons why we think that this is the best piece to work with. We've been in conversations with Stephanie and her team on reviewing drafts of that plan, and I fully expect that at the next meeting, we would be daylighting that in its final detail, because we'll be leaning on all of you and your staff to help us navigate the process of getting that project executed more quickly.
Darren, just out of curiosity, people understand an express lane, they understand how much time it takes and how much space is needed to create an express lane. When we're doing 30 miles of fiber optic cabling, what's your sense of the disruptions throughout our communities? And maybe the ramp metering as well, once that takes place?
Yeah, I can't really talk to the fiber optic, that's not my project, but Amjad and Sam behind me could probably give you an answer to that question on sort of what, to what extent. What I can tell you about that is that it's in the state right-of-way, so any impacts would be confined to the state right-of-way in terms of installing that, and usually it's a trenching process, so it shouldn't have too much impact. In terms of the ramp metering project, and let's just focus on that initial segment that I, that I have been discussing with you, there will be ramp improvements at Bollinger Canyon, Crow Canyon, and Sycamore Valley Road. We do need to add additional capacity at those ramps and to reconfigure those ramps so that they'll work more effectively in a CARM operation. And some of that does require, actually Lavorne, I think, has some widening as well. And some of that does require building retaining walls, so there will be some excavation that needs to take place and some minor structural work. So that definitely has impacts on local communities when those ramps are being constructed. Now, obviously, like all construction projects, the construction team will be coordinating with the local communities and developing detour plans and providing regular updates on milestones in the construction so that that way your communities can be aware of those impacts. For you in the transit business, we would also obviously be coordinating with you to ensure that none of your buses are going to get impacted, or to the extent necessary, you can reroute them during those periods of time when ramps may be impacted by construction activity. So, but again, the goal here is to keep the limits of the project's construction confined to the state right-of-way and to minimize those impacts on the local communities during construction, but to the extent necessary, communicate with the communities on what's going on so that you're aware of it if we do need to close a ramp or, you know, that sort of thing for a period of time.
Crow Canyon just happens to be my exit to get home.
Yep. So I can, I can tell you that at some point, it will be impacted, and we will need to close ramps to complete, you know, paving and sort of restriping and that sort of stuff. But, you know, like we usually do for those types of projects, those tend to take place overnight, they tend to be for short periods, and again, we would be providing advance notice to the local communities when that needs to happen.
So you have a curfew. You're going to have to get home before eight o'clock or something if you want to take that exit. I think for all of us, it's the communication to our constituents.
That's why Danielle's here.
I know, no, no. And again, I represent Alamo, and actually for them, their goal is to keep people from exiting the freeway and getting on their road, so maybe this will be a good thing.
Yeah, right.
But nevertheless, just us being able to get this communication out to our communities about what the delays are to be expected, but more importantly, what it's for and the benefit.
Exactly.
And please continue, Darren, if you have more.
I think there's one more, two more. Okay, so we had a lot of discussion already about the O&M framework. As Stephanie mentioned, we are in the process of developing O&M agreements for the, for the CARM project. That process has involved a fairly robust outreach to the local jurisdictions as well as to our stakeholder agencies that will be involved, and so we've got a lot of really good and productive feedback from the local communities through that outreach effort, and that has really helped to shape the O&M agreement. But as Stephanie said, it also helps to highlight to us other things that we need to develop in more detail in the concept of operations, and then ultimately, when we get into the operations agreements and the standard operating procedures. So those will all get reflected as we continue through the process. So where are we in that timeline? As I said, we've gone through a pretty robust review with the local jurisdictions that involved a whole series of one-on-one meetings with the jurisdictions to discuss sort of their concerns, their perspectives on ramp metering, things that they would like to see with CARM, things that they wouldn't like to see. That was all ingested and incorporated into the drafts that were developed back in the summer. Those drafts were then provided back to the local jurisdiction so that they could review them and provide additional feedback, make sure that we're hitting the mark in terms of their comments. That information was then taken to develop a final draft, and then that final draft is now with Caltrans getting their review so that ultimately, we can execute those agreements and get them out to the locals. And then it will help to inform the subsequent agreements that we will be developing for the implementation of the project. So there were a number of questions and comments that came up along the way. We have shared these with you before, but just to reiterate a few of them, so there was a lot of questions in terms of what is CARM and what is ARM, similar to your question, what's the difference here? So we've provided some additional explanation on the differences in terms of the time of day of operation, the capabilities of the different systems, functionality. Reiterated the comment that Amjad made, that when the Caltrans system is complete, or as the meters get completed, they will rest on green, they won't be operating until the whole system is ready to start operating. Obviously, there's been multiple concerns, and we've heard it here in your forum, but in every forum that we've been to, over, well, is this just going to impact our local streets? Is it going to cause backups to occur on our local streets? So we've been meeting with your staff to further explain how the system works, especially what makes CARM different from other systems in terms of its capability to measure ramp queues in real time and to adapt the ramp metering rates in order to better manage those queues. So we've been providing some reassurance. It will also be reflected in the, in the standard operating procedures in terms of who do you contact if a ramp is backing up and causing problems, so that that way, there's further clarification on exactly how and what protocols are in place in order to respond to that if necessary. You asked about performance monitoring before, so to reiterate that, further elaboration on some of the resources that will be available. One of the features of CARM, and Tim kind of alluded to it, but didn't quite get all the way there, the system that we're using, Streams, is an actual traffic management system. CARM is just one of the modules that operates within that system. So it gives us a really robust dashboard that we can use to share performance monitoring information in real time with all of your communities. And then for those that are more technical, we can provide a bit more information in terms of how things are operating and avenues to make changes if necessary. We will be providing data and feeding it into other systems like PEMS or the new system that will be replacing PEMS, and similarly can provide data feeds to your local community. So if you have a TMC, we can provide the data from the CARM project to your TMCs, that way you can be observing how the freeway conditions and how the ramp conditions are in real time. And then, again, the differences between ARM and 680 CARM projects, sort of who's responsible for what, how to communicate if there are issues, the decision-making processes that we'll go through, the reporting processes that we'll go through, what metrics are going to be evaluated across both projects, how that's going to get compared, how your agencies can get involved in reviewing that information and providing feedback. So we heard your local agency comments loud and clear, and we were able to incorporate as much of that information as we could into the process. And then to finish up, so again, this all feeds into informing the MOUs, the standard operating procedures, sort of the rules of the game in terms of how we're going to play it here in Contra Costa County. So we are taking that information as we embark on developing those subsequent agreements. The agreements will cover all the ramp meters in the county, so not just the CARM project, but the SHOP project as well, so that there's a single consolidated document that covers all of the responsibilities. So that process obviously involves Caltrans, it involves our team, it involves CCTA staff. Your staff are all engaged in that process in order to influence what actually gets incorporated into these documents. So we are now embarking on developing the SOP. We are, I'm assigning one of my colleagues to lead that process. He will be starting that in this, in this period, basically developing an outline. We'll obviously share that outline with our technical leads at CCTA, but then ultimately through these committees, we'll share that with you. And the goal is to have that completed by 2027, because if we want to be up and running in 2028, we need to have our operating procedures in place. So we feel like we can deliver that, and we feel like we can get to a place where we can have that system up and running and start to see the benefits as you embark on your measure campaigns.
Any questions, comments? Go ahead, Carolyn, please.
Thank you, yes, thank you for the presentation. So I had seen a bullet in one of the earlier slides about a labor agreement, and I saw three letters, AAA, labor agreement, so can you clarify what that, what that is?
I will actually defer to Stephanie and Ryan and Tim to answer that one for me.
That's meant to be administer, administer award, advertise an award of a construction contract, so CCTA will lead the construction project for CARM. That's all that, not AAA like the insurance AAA, but the AAA for construction contracts.
Okay, but meaning though, is there a project labor agreement signed?
Yeah, so with the mega award or advocating for the mega funding, CCTA committed to having a PLA, a project labor agreement for the mega-funded project, so that includes the express lane phase one and CARM.
Okay, okay, and so the commitment was made, and so do you still have to sign the agreement?
Yeah, so I think, well, Tim's been working a lot with the labor union executives and attorneys. We have a draft in place, but we will only sign it once the mega funding is secured.
Okay, and when do you anticipate you'll actually get the money in hand? I know they get awarded.
It changes day by day, week by week at this point. The, there's actually been a lot of progress on the mega grant. Stephanie has been doing an outstanding job in terms of staying on top of it, being very responsive with federal highways. The, kind of the process we've been going through was, I'll give you, I'll give you kind of the detailed update. So we, we received the new funding agreement template back in summertime of this year, and the new, the new funding template basically improved, included things like, you know, the, you know, ICE and DOGE and DB, all these other, all these different programs that this administration has been promoting. And we reviewed the agreement, we had no issues with a lot of the language, and then we went to DC in September, and we met with the secretary's office, and they asked us some very direct questions about some of their priorities, and we took no issue, because a lot of those issues have, don't really impact transportation. And literally, literally, after that meeting, the next day, we got an email from the secretary's office essentially kind of green-lighting our project. And so, so then Stephanie was basically responded to all of the responses and feedback and everything on the new funding template. She's been going back and forth with California Division, and then two weeks ago, the California Division approved the application, sent it to headquarters, which is, so now, now it's in Federal Highways DC. And so now, we've been working collectively advocating for the application in DC, and obviously with the federal shutdown, things have kind of slowed a bit, but surprisingly, there's still been progress has been made even with the federal shutdown, like federal highways has been still working even during the, even during the shutdown. So we're optimistic that, you know, as long as, you know, there's not this big wedge that gets between California and this administration, you know, then we're pretty hopeful that we'll be successful on getting the obligation of the funds. And then to Stephanie's point, once we get the funding agreement executed, then we'll move forward on the PLA.
Now, the question I have, I know with the PLA and the federal government, I know in past administrations with the county where we have a $1 million threshold for a PLA for public works projects that we're getting funding from the federal government under a republic administration, we could not have a PLA. Has that been discussed? Is that an issue at all with this?
It hasn't come up yet, and, and this is, and the only thing on, the only thing on this PLA is that it's not like a global PLA with like a $1 million threshold, like this PLA is a project-specific PLA. So it's, it's literally for the northbound express lanes and the CARM projects.
And, and we had very specific projects too, where we just had to say on these projects, we're going to have to waive our $1 million PLA threshold because the federal government wouldn't allow it. So anyway, I'm, I'm not trying to throw the wrench in the engine, I'm just raising that issue because I know it came up previously when I was in the Board of Supervisors earlier in my term.
Okay.
So far, so good.
And so just getting, so the point is making progress, thank you for going into all those details, but in terms of the award date, that is still unknown because lots of stuff is in flux.
Yeah, there's a lot of, lots of stuff in flux, and optimistically, you know, early next year at this point. And the unfortunate part is the longer it takes to get the mega agreement, funding agreement signed, the more it delays the RFP for the progressive design build, PCM contract, you know, so, so it just continues to push out the northbound express lanes project, month by month by month. I mean, literally, the funding agreement is literally now the critical path in order to get the project, to advance the project. And, you know, we don't really want to necessarily take risk on, you know, releasing an RFP and not necess, I mean, this is something that the CCTA board is going to have to discuss, and we will be discussing it in December, by the way, at the next December board meeting. But, but we want to, we want to get direction, like do we want to move forward on releasing the RFP and then basically make contract award contingent on receiving the funding agreement, or do we want to release the RFP contingent on doing the funding agreement? And so there's, there's a couple of things there in terms of risks, you know, just to, just to kind of keep the process moving forward and get the, and keeping the project, you know, on track in terms of schedule.
Any other questions that you have more in your presentation? Okay, so who is up next, or are we done? Do you have, I thought we had three people who are presenting on this one item. We're done, okay, well, we're going to go to the public, see if they have any questions, and I, I see there are no more questions here, I'm not seeing any public comment.
No remote in person or written public comment.
Okay, well, thank you so much for that. So now we're going to go into what, I think the highlight of this evening, where we're talking bus on shoulder, so Andy Dillard is here to present that. Not, not just say CARM, okay, CARM, you know what, CARM is really, really interesting. We love it, it's just bus on shoulder, I think we've been working on probably for 20 years, we've only been working on this one for 10. Yeah, so anyway, Andy, go ahead, please.
I don't know if I can live up to all these expectations.
We're just, we're depending on you.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening, I'm Andy Dillard, I'm the senior engineer here with, with CCTA, and I'm happy to provide an update on how things are going with the part-time transit lane and transit bus on shoulder project. So just as a brief, a brief background before we get into the, to the fun stuff here, the ultimate project for bus on shoulder, first phase would be I-680 northbound between Bollinger Canyon and Inatia Valley. As you, as you've heard before in previous meetings, the PID was approved in March of '23, and we're waiting to begin work on the PA and ED once the Caltrans bus on shoulder guidelines are approved. So we're hoping that can commence later in 2026. So I believe the last time you heard this was maybe in the spring at the Innovate 680 PAC, so just a little bit more background, CCTA was awarded $2 million in transit and inner-city rail capital program funds for the specific project here at the Gomentum Station, and the project basically encompasses testing operational scenarios and various technologies, and then it also provides opportunities for the transit operator training that actually occurred earlier this year, and that will be ongoing as the project moves forward. Of course, this project at Gomentum Station, we want to leverage this ultimately to accelerate I-680 part-time transit lanes operations, and as part of this process, we initiated a stakeholder working group meeting with all of our stakeholders, and that I'll go over in more detail. And then in addition, as you all well know too, back in fall of 2024, we took a trip down to Sandag to look at their pilot project, and we've been also gathering information from how that's been going as well as some of their, their documentation. So as far as the Gomentum Station project, in a couple of different phases here, so we considered phase one our preliminary engineering and environmental clearance phases, which occurred in 2024, and then we moved on to final design, and we completed design, I believe, sometime around the last time you've heard this presentation, in spring of '25. We proceeded to get our construction allocation from the CTC in March of '25, and that allowed us to move on to actual construction and begin operations at Gomentum. It's been a busy summer and fall, ramping up to the testing that we conducted in October. We awarded a construction contract for striping because we actually needed to do striping layouts at Gomentum Station for all the different scenarios that I'll go into here shortly. And all this culminated and led up to our testing week, which occurred in October, October 6th through 10th. So really quickly, again, I'll go through our very vital stakeholder working group that participated in all aspects of this, it included Caltrans District 4, District 11 and Headquarters, MTC, California Highway Patrol, Golden Gate and Headquarters Divisions, Our, our partners at County Connection, I'll definitely talk a little bit more about them, they were just a huge component of this project, and we really couldn't have done it without them, and of course CCTA staff, and under that, it also is our consultant team, which was Kimberly Horn, and they played a really vital role in developing this whole thing too. There was a lot of coordination, so really want to take my hats off to them and thank them as well. So the purpose of the stakeholder, they provided a lot of input along the way on the scope, design, and operations, including development of a standard operating procedures and an evaluation plan at Gomentum Station. And then, as, as you'll see here in a moment, they participated in the testing and training, or the testing and evaluation that we did in October. So to date, we've had four stakeholder meetings, we're planning a fifth stakeholder meeting, that's TBD, we're hoping for December, but it's probably going to be more like mid to late January, where we're going to debrief on everything that we tested in October. We'll give all the stakeholders a chance to review our evaluation plan and provide comments on, on that plan. We'll give all the stakeholders a chance to review our evaluation plan and provide comments on, on that plan. So these are, again, and you've seen this before, but this is all the roles and responsibilities of our various stakeholders. And Caltrans, CHP, FHWA, as I mentioned, they all participated in the testing week in October and gave us really, really good feedback. As well as some of our transit operators also, such as AC Transit also was a participant. So on to the testing week. So it was basically a full five-day week. It began with a testing of mainline right shoulder scenarios. The next day was specifically, specifically for one lane off-ramp scenarios, followed by one lane on-ramp scenarios. And then finally on Thursday, we did two lane off-ramp scenarios. And then on Friday, we had a very, very well-attended executive showcase where we invited all the executives from our various stakeholder, stakeholder agencies to come. And it was, it was the most well-attended day of, of all five. And we had a chance to run all of those scenarios, kind of a little bit more of a truncated day as you can see there. But we gave everyone an opportunity to, to observe all of these different scenarios. Just really quickly, at the bottom there, you see the map. So this is basically where we tested those scenarios at Gomendam Station. We had three separate locations for all the different scenarios. I want to go over the technology a little bit. I believe you've seen this before, but this has been flushed out a little bit further. These are the two apparatus that we used for the testing. On the left-hand side, that's basically a ramp meter. So that was stationed at the one lane on-ramp. You can see there that it's outfitted with several different cameras with a traffic signal head and then a bus merging sign as well as a traffic signal controller cabinet to communicate and operate all these devices. The cameras provided several different functions. They, they all collected data for us, which we're currently sifting through and, and, and we're gonna put in our evaluation plan. The cameras provided monitoring as well as communications for the detection. And it as well give us, as I mentioned, the data for things such as positioning and, and speeds for the bus running speeds for the, both the transit bus and the single passenger vehicles that we actually integrated into the testing as well. On the right-hand side here, this is, this was stationed along the main lines of the various locations. And these pretty much just gave us the data, collected the data that we were seeking. A little bit more about the technology. On the left here, you see this is what we've gleaned from the San Diego pilot project and the technologies they used. It was sort of a late addition here, but I'm very happy to report that we were able to actually permanently mount. And thank you to General Manager Churchill, who I believe will speak on it shortly. But they allowed us to, to install a Mobileye technology, which you see there on the right. And this is advanced collision technology. So that was permanently mounted on the bus in advance of our, of our testing week. And what that does is it detects objects in front of the bus. There's detector, detectors on each side. You can see that in the left-hand side there of that exhibit. Those were mounted on the left and right-hand sides of the bus as well as inside the bus itself. And then it had a sensor that you can see that gave the operator the, the message that there was an object in the roadway. So moving on to the scenarios. So as I mentioned, there was three locations. We tested again the one lane off-ramp scenario. You can see there the 1A label. The two lane, there was several two lane scenarios, one lane off-ramp with different options and then two lane off-ramps with different options. And then the main line, which basically is pretty straightforward. It's buses running down the shoulder of the main line unobstructed. And then you can see in Scenario Seven there, we placed an obstruction in the main, in, in the shoulder. And it required the bus to maneuver around that obstruction. A little bit more on the scenarios. You can see there's some variances and nuances to the one and two lane. Basically, we tested whether or not the bus would go past the off-ramp and then merge back into the shoulder or it would take the off-ramp and then merge back into the shoulder. But with all scenarios, we tested the bus getting out of the shoulder first before it got to the one or two lane off-ramps. So another key partner actually that helped us out with this project was, was, was our partners at NextGen. They provided drone footage for the entire week. It all turned out very, very well. We've gotten approval from the Navy, which is required before we can release this. So, so we're all good here. But we're looking forward to share this footage in the future for everyone's use. But we're currently still scrubbing it and labeling it, but I'm happy to, to provide a few clips this evening. So this is an example of the one lane on-ramp scenario. And as you can see in the right-hand side of the screen, the bus is traveling down the, the shoulder approaching the one lane on-ramp. You can see on the left-hand side there that the passenger vehicles are being held back. The meter is operational in this case. And then you can see the car was just released. So as the bus approached, it triggered the meter, as it would a typical ramp meter, and allowed the bus to pass safely through before releasing the vehicle. Here you can see that the bus is merging back into the, the shoulder once it clears the on-ramp. This is a scenario, and we did several different runs of these, where the passenger vehicle either ran the meter or simulated the, the ramp meter not working. So what that required the bus operator to do is to adapt to the vehicle going up the on-ramp. So we did several different runs of this. You can see that the passenger vehicle in this case just ran right through the meter. And now the operator was required to navigate moving out of the shoulder and, and reacting to that passenger vehicle. So in this, this clip here, you can see it's, it's, they're going along the main line and then the bus eventually merges back into the shoulder. And I'll also mention too, that on all these scenarios, we did several different variations. But one of the primary variations we did was the bus running at both 25 miles per hour and 35 miles per hour. So as you've probably heard before, the max running speeds, that's gonna be allowed for bus on shoulders, 35 miles an hour. So we wanted to make sure we got that max speed as well as the 25 mile an hour scenario as well. Moving on to one lane, this is the one lane off-ramp scenario. And in this, this clip or scenario, we interjected two passenger vehicles. So it forced the operator to have to merge in between the lead car and the rear car that you see there. So kind of a more kind of real, real world type of environment. And on the left up there in the screen, you can see the technology that was tracking the, the speed and giving us all that, that data. Here you can see the bus is passing past the off-ramp, merging back into the shoulder. This is one of the options of the one lane. And I just have two more of these. And then this is the two lane off-ramp. So this is basically the bus running in an aux lanes type scenario, which is what you'll see along 680 northbound for actual operations. Very similar to the one lane as far as the striping, although you can see that this is more simulating an auxiliary lane with the skip striping, the bus merging into the main line. And in this case, the bus will, I believe it takes the off-ramp before it gets back into the shoulder. So it's the variation of that, that, that scenario. And this bus here, now it's running at about 10 miles per hour. So it's with mainline traffic. So it's going a little bit slower than the previous scenario. So initially it was doing 25. And it, once it intermixed with the traffic, it was going down to the traffic running speed, which is about 10 miles per hour. And then finally, this is a, this is the same one, except for it passes the off-ramp. And again, running speed here is 25 miles an hour with 10 mile an hour mainline traffic. And it's always important to notice or to remember too, that, you know, the bus, this is only happening during breakdown. So when the freeway mainline is fully congested, slower running speeds. And, and it, it, it really helps kind of, kind of signify what, what, what it's gonna look like and feel like for a driver operating a transit bus. Here you can see it passes the off-ramp and then gets back into the shoulder. And then actually I do have one more. This is the, this is the main line and this is the obstruction avoidance. So that Mobileye technology that I explained earlier, this was in operation during this scenario. So the driver saw the Mobileye sensor light up. There you can see there's a little smart car. That was our obstruction in the shoulder. And it maneuvered around that, intermixed with traffic and then moved back into the, into the shoulder.
So Andy, you said you're gonna, you're still compiling all the data. But you had CHP there, you had County Connection there. Were there any surprises where everyone said, oh, you know, what, this is gonna be a problem? Or was, did it go fairly smoothly?
It went very smoothly. And the big takeaway was it wasn't, it wasn't, there wasn't anything new that people haven't seen before.
Because I know we've studied San Diego and other places where they've done it. So it was working as we anticipated.
As anticipated. And it really helped solidify support for this operation and for the project itself. It just really helped to solidify that. But yeah, no, no major, no major issues or concerns with all the scenarios that we ran. So. As I mentioned, all the, the partner agencies, stakeholders that have been participating in the stakeholder meetings, they all attended throughout the week. As I mentioned, you know, the executive showcase was the most attended, but we got really good feedback from all of our, all of our stakeholders. Another nuance to the, to the testing was we allowed the stakeholders or gave them the opportunity to actually board the bus too. So they viewed all the scenarios from the observation deck, which is to the side of the, the road basically. And then everybody boarded the bus and they rode the bus for all the scenarios as well. So they got to feel what it was like at all those different running speeds and for the merging action and so forth. So that, that was very, very beneficial. I already mentioned the bus running speeds. Those were the, the two running speeds that we did for all scenarios. And, and as you mentioned, yes, positive feedback was received for, for all the scenarios that we tested. There was discussion about potential for the off-ramp scenarios for the bus continuing through the off-ramp versus merging out into the main line beforehand. So that's one of the scenarios that we, we didn't test. We actually tested it one day for the, the one lane. But one of our conclusions was that in the future, if it wanted to be considered, that's, that's the purpose of the Gomendam T-Bus testing ground. Is that, you know, if there's mitigation measures, we could pursue to potentially try that type of scenario where the bus is just running straight through the off-ramp, we could certainly have opportunities to do that in the future. And as I mentioned, we're still continuing to collect feedback and working on our evaluation plan and summarizing all the data and putting that into a nice report. And we'll send that out to our stakeholder group before our next meeting. So as I mentioned, it was a busy summer. This is pretty much our, our schedule of events that started in July from, from training that we initially did all the way through October. I would like to take a moment to talk just really quickly about the training that was held in July. So our consultant team put together a training curriculum for the County Connection operators in advance of this. And it was really a partnership from day one with them. They, they were amazing. They, they provided us with good fact, they, good feedback. They, we, we learned from them as well in getting our evaluation plan together. We spent about a half a day doing classroom training, followed by a, a day of pre-runs out at Gomendam. Without all the fancy striping, just with cones and doing some dry runs, just to get a feel for it. And then we continued to finalize our operating procedures in advance of the October runs. And then we did some more pre-testing with the striping down with County Connection and their, their two primary operators who, who worked, who drove during the testing week, just to make sure we had all the kinks out. And then we commenced with the five-day testing period in October. So as I mentioned, we're, we're finalizing that evaluation. We'll reconvene. And then we're anticipating and hoping that sometime in '26, those Caltrans guidelines will be finalized and we can move on to the PA and ED. And also before I take questions, I'd like to give Mr. Churchill an opportunity to speak.
Come on up, Bill. And, and again, as you're describing the County Connection drivers, Sue, Robert and I all sit on County Connection. We're like, well, of course, I said Sue, Robert and I. I said Sue, I mean, so of course our County Connection drivers were flawless. But go ahead, Bill.
All right. Well, thank you. And Andy, thank you. Before I say anything, I just really wanted to thank Andy and Tim and the entire TwoCTA staff. This was really phenomenally organized. It was put together so professionally. And Andy is humble in his presentation and what's behind it and under it is profoundly complex. It looks so simple when you see those, those few videos. The reality is, at least what I observed, they set up sort of so many other scenarios and they didn't run them just one time. They ran them many, many times and they actually pushed the envelope. They had some of those drivers get rather aggressive so that you're pushing on the bus driver to really figure out what to do. And you're pushing on the technology that we're installing on the vehicles to ensure that it really does work in a real-world situation. And so just the thought process that went behind it, the level of collaboration was really heartening for me. There were so many stakeholders. County Connection was just one stakeholder that was brought to the table here. And ultimately, I think County Connection is the one that would, would really receive the most benefit from this. But the thing that I appreciated the most and something, and the reason why I really wanted to say a couple of words is County, or TwoCTA has really set the table and brought all the different stakeholders together in a way that will make bus on shoulder work, not just for County Connection, but they're working with CHP and Caltrans from a perspective that, that sets the standard for the entire state of California. So really the leadership that TwoCTA has put together is going to set up the guidelines and the policies and the future direction that will allow transit agencies, not just in Contra Costa County, but across the entire state of California, to implement these types of programs. So from my perspective, I just have a tremendous amount of appreciation for that work and that effort and, and the foresight to do that. And, you know, in this venue, County Connection is just one of many different parts. And so TwoCTA has just done a phenomenal job of bringing the whole world of all the different pieces and components together into one venue to make it happen. So I thought it was really important to sort of put that perspective out there from, from County Connection, just as a partner in this. And another thing that I think was really interesting, my staff is, is, they're excited about this. They, they came away from this recognizing this is gonna work and it's gonna happen. And they're really looking forward to that day where we can actually implement, and they're driving on the shoulder. And they have an advantage over the regular car. So TwoCTA, I think it's important for you to know, and Andy, you to know, that what you did and what you set up and that sort of collaborative partnership and putting this together really got County Connection staff excited and, and looking forward to that day. And the question, and I think Candace, you asked the question, was there something new that we learned, something different? There is one thing. Andy isn't gonna mention it, but I want the video of it. What, one thing we did- One thing we did discover, it was calving season, and little cows love to chase buses. And we did not know that. So there was something new that we did learn, not that it matters to the project, but thank you.
So we'll be keeping cows off the freeways, which is during breeding season.
So Andy, thank you for giving me an opportunity to say a few words, and just thank you for the collaboration.
Andrew, first of all, thank you for your presentation. And Bill, always, we have such a great respect for those of us who sit on County Connection, how hard it is to drive a bus to begin with. And we have such great respect for those behind the wheel, because they really do an incredible job. And I know you put down a lot of obstacles, but you know, when we drive the freeway every now and then, you run into the little things, a ladder on the freeway, a sawhorse, a couch, a mattress, a tire. Those things come upon you pretty quickly. Now, I know you're going 25, 35 miles an hour, but still, you don't always get to see those things. How do we factor that in?
Well, so you have the technology that we talked about, which is one component, but you can't replace driver skill ultimately with this operation. That's first and foremost. So making sure they're properly trained. And the operators that we had, the supervisors, they were just fantastic. They were the best of the best. But making sure that any operator that's going to be doing this has that training so they can anticipate those types of situations. But to answer your question, the technology certainly helps, but at the end of the day, it's driver awareness as they get more experience.
Do you also envision paratransit one day, running bus on the shoulder?
So currently, no. That is not necessarily anticipated for bus-on-shoulder. And part of that is CHP is very concerned about the safety of their office space, as they call it. And when you open the world up to the paratransit, now you're dealing with maybe a multitude of different subcontractors, and then the training challenges, the technology challenges on some of these smaller vehicles becomes probably cost prohibitive and a bit more challenging. So I think it's a safety issue first and foremost, and so you really want to keep it, at least for now, fairly narrowly defined. And one other component about the technology that maybe Andy hadn't mentioned yet, not only is the technology on the bus, there's technology, that bus, what's on it, when it detects something in the shoulder, it's actually informing dispatch back at County Connection. When that happens, County Connection actually can turn off for all buses. They're not allowed to go into the shoulder. And so the technology, there's a little light, goes red on the bus, and the operator knows they're not allowed into the shoulder. Once dispatch knows that obstruction's been cleared, then dispatch can then reopen it for everybody. So there's multiple layers to it. It's not just the operator and just the technology on the bus. It's also the communication back to dispatch and the technology in dispatch that gets implemented. So it's a pretty holistic system that they're putting together and designing?
Yeah, I mean, maybe I can just add to it, because I think, I'll tie maybe like the previous presentations to like all of this as well. So this is where the operations and maintenance agreement is really key, right? Because everyone understands their roles and responsibilities in terms of like how to operate this thing. And so as you think about this countywide traffic management center that we want to build and implement, this is where you've got center-to-center communication happening between the TMC and dispatch with County Connection. But then also, there's a number of protocols, like for example, like in Minnesota and even in San Diego, there's a number of protocols that you have to do before you even open the shoulder for operations. So for example, like the shoulder in San Diego operates from like, you know, during peak periods from like 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM, right? And then the buses are really not allowed to use it during midday times, right? And so it's only allowed to use it during peak periods. So what happens is before 6:00 AM, basically, Caltrans basically goes out there, and they physically drive and inspect the shoulder before operations. And then they also use their TMC with basically CCTV cameras. And so they're not just relying just on bus technology, they're relying on a whole number of standard operating procedures in order to fully operate the shoulder. You know, and so there's a number of protocols, there's a traffic management center, there's cameras monitoring the shoulder, you know, you've got the dispatch. I mean, it's an undertaking in terms of operating the bus on shoulder on a daily basis, hourly basis. And so that's where that O and M agreement's like really important and key, you know, to be able to pull together like all these roles and responsibilities for successful operations. So I guess since I have the floor, I want to thank again County Connection. Just, I heard nothing but just rave reviews in terms of the partnership and the work that we were doing with County Connection, your supervisors, your staff, everyone. I'm so excited, I think we're all excited, that this is actually going to happen, you know? And Bill kind of took some of my comments, but shared some of what I was going to feed back. But I think, but CHP, you know, we're taking a much different approach on our project than what San Diego did. San Diego was very much like, I'll say, like being more aggressive with their delivery approach, where I think we're taking more of like a collaborative partnership approach. And to Bill's point, which is leading to more benefits in terms of, you know, CHP coming onboard with the project. I mean, CHP, their three concern is safety, enforcement, and training, you know? And so, and training needs to be consistent, and that's one of the things I think that's really awesome about the Gomendum station and having Gomendum station, is that not only we've set all this infrastructure for demonstration purposes, but we've set up all this infrastructure for training purposes, like statewide training. So like as Bill was mentioning, as other trans operators are adopting bus-on-shoulder, we'll have this facility at Gomendum station for other trans operators to use for training, you know? And so not very many, if at all, agencies have access to Gomendum station, the way that we have access to Gomendum station, right? And so there's just a ton of benefit. And I think the other benefit of doing this testing at Gomendum station is that it really demonstrated public benefit, because too often, we think about the private companies that are testing out there, and Caltrans is one of our partners at Gomendum station. And I think CHP and everyone was like, "Wow, this is really cool." Like we can, there's a lot of opportunity here to really do some public benefit demonstrations in terms of projects. And then last and final, I think the important thing here is that, and Andy already said it, but he is being extremely humble in this. This guy did a fantastic, amazing job with this entire program. The incredible thing about this project is we had some very like important people from Caltrans come to Gomendum station to observe the project and really inform this statewide guidance, you know, to Bill's point and Andy's point. And I think, one of the things I think that we learned from the project are the challenges to operate bus-on-shoulder, because too often what happens is you write this policy, and you don't really understand how the policy is going to be operationalized. And now that you see how it's operationalized, you start looking at it like, "Wait a second. Does it really make sense for the bus to exit the shoulder for every exit ramp?" You know, because all that means is there's a bus driver that's going to have to exit into congested traffic and then enter back into the shoulder, and all that does is create potential concerns for sideswipes and accidents and safety, and maybe doesn't not solve the safety problem that we are solving. Maybe it's introducing other challenges. And I think, so I think we learned a lot about how the policy's written, how we operationalize it, and maybe how the policy can change, you know, to actually make bus-on-shoulder safer, you know? And so I think that's another thing that we really learned from the project. But again, thank you to Bill and Andy, just for the great work that you both did on this and the whole team.
Other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. So thank you very much for the presentation, and obviously, I am on this committee specifically for this project. I'm representing LAFTA, for those of you who may have forgotten why I'm here in Contra Costa County.
Don't forget.
And what I'm, I love the, we're very excited about this. We love the collaboration and all that. But what I haven't heard yet is LAFTA's participation in the stakeholder group or the training or the executive director day. Was LAFTA invited to any of that? I'm not sure that we participated, and I want to make sure that that was not an oversight. Were we part of developing the training manual? Were we at the table, is I guess what I'm asking? And if not, how do we make sure that we're there going forward? Can we get copies of the drone footage so that we can give comments before the final draft? You know, this is, we're very excited about this. We do run our 70 Express bus right up 680 every day. We are anticipating being part of this bus-on-shoulder, so we would really like to be part of developing it and offering feedback as well.
Well, going forward, we can certainly invite LAFTA to the table. They didn't participate in the testing week, but we'd be certainly happy to reach out to them in the future, especially when the evaluation plan is completed, so.
Okay, are they part of the working group? Have they been invited?
Yes, they have been, yeah.
Good, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And then just to add a little bit of a nuance to it, so yes, LAFTA is going to be roped into it. They are very well aware of the project. And you may be aware that both County Connection and LAFTA are going to reimagine our express routes down the 680 corridor. We will be co-mingling our routes and then also cooperating our routes, probably the only example of its kind, if board-approved on both sides, in the state of California. And so they will be using the facility, just like County Connection operators, and will become a component of the project at a very deep level.
Perfect.
So it's in the plans.
And my other question is that hasn't really been addressed, and it's, again, for this testing, it's not necessary, but when we first started talking about bus-on-shoulder, there was a lot of discussion about the condition of our shoulders and whether we would need to pave them, to strengthen them, to have a different material on them to really hold the load of a bus. So how, where does that fit in to the scheme of things? Is there a separate team sort of assessing shoulders along the route to sort of determine what we really need to do to shore that up?
Yeah, I mean, this is just one component to the project. And so the other project components is, you know, we're currently going through the environmental document phase, you know, for the project. And so through the environmental document phase, we're doing all the normal project delivery. So identifying the infrastructure needed for the project, you know, reinforcement of like drainage grates and, you know, and just as far as I know, and off the top of my head, I'm pretty sure that the shoulder is actually in good enough shape to run a bus on it. Like we don't have to go in and actually like repave or reconstruct a shoulder, based on my recollection, it's been a while. And so, but we've been doing like concept of operations, environmental studies, you know, engineering reports, like all of that's been included. So I think all that work has been kind of put on hold or paused, because we've been waiting for these state guidance to be able to finalize the environmental document and the con ops. And so we're really excited that this guidance is going to finally be released, because we'll be able to complete the environmental document phase of the project.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Karen, the other question?
Quick one. With respect to what you're talking about here with the buses and what's the strength of the shoulder, and we just use the word "bus" kind of as all-encompassing, but I remember when the buses first started with hydrogen and other things that were much heavier on the road, and then the roads weren't able to take it. So are we doing testing with all types of buses?
I would have to get back to you on that. I'm not exactly sure. It's been a while since we picked up this document and actually looked at it, but I would assume where we are, you know, looking at all the different vehicle types and everything that we use in the shoulder, both public and private, you know? But we can certainly circle back with you.
No, I appreciate that, because that was kind of a surprise to all of us when we found that. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other committee members with questions? Anyone in the audience with questions? Anyone watching from home with questions?
There are no written in-person or remote public comments.
Okay, well, thank you, Andy, Bill, everyone, Tim, for making this happen, and it's very exciting. I think we all look forward to the report. Okay, so now we're just going to talk really quickly, because we're almost at the end of our meeting. Any future policy discussion? I think it really is sort of anything additional that we want to talk about, that we want to have on the agenda. Danielle's here to sort of take that feedback from us. Does anyone have anything that they're really wondering why we're not doing something right now? Okay, no, I don't see that. I think everyone's happy with it. We do have a schedule of PAC meetings, and right now, it's scheduled for February 11th, April 29th, July 8th, October 14th. Are there any concerns by anyone about those dates? Any conflicts with League of California Cities events or CSAC or anything? I'm not seeing any when I looked at my calendar, so.
We specifically avoided the League of Cities meeting dates.
Thank you for doing that. That's important, because we do have so many city council members as well. So I think we would have a motion to approve the calendar for 2026, if someone would like to make that motion.
I would love to make that motion.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, we've got a motion and a second, and if you want to do a roll call for us?
Who, sorry, who did the second?
The second was, right, it's Janine Josie.
Thank you. Okay. Member Carlson.
Yes.
Member Josie.
Yes.
Member Obringer.
Yes.
Member Wren.
Yes.
Member Stepper.
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Noack.
Yes.
And Chair Anderson.
Yes. Okay, and then there are.
You missed me.
Oh, did you miss? Sorry. Member Store.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we feel sorry about that. Thank you. Okay, correspondence and communication, anyone wish to highlight anything? Seeing none? It looks like Ken's halfway out the door. He's packed, he's ready to go. Okay. So we are going to go ahead. Thank you all for your participation, for this information. We are going to adjourn at 7:50 PM. I knew when I met with Danielle and Stephanie, I was thinking we're going to be pretty close to two hours, but hey, you got 10 minutes back. So thank you, and see you all soon.